Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Heretic?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall? Mr. Whitehurst?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Chandler?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As we start your work session this evening, one of the first items we're going to talk about would be the legislative proposal.
Okay. We were having, sure.
All right, we'll go ahead and take the next item.
Okay. Street sweeping. Oh, there's that, sure. Sure, come on in. Would y'all please let her in?
Thank you.
Ms. Neal? Good evening.
This water is the other legislature.
Okay, how are we all?
Okay.
Are you ready? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Council members, as you normally do this...
Music to legislate that.
As you normally do, this is the annual opportunity where you take a look at your legislative package. This would be state and federal. And as a normal process, I believe, coming up on October 29th, you would then meet with the delegation. Ms. Neal's going to walk you through the provisions of the legislative package this evening. And of course, we've had a number of civic engagement components with it over the last year or so as well. Welcome, Ms. Neal.
Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, council members, city manager, members of council. This evening, I'm going to quickly walk you through the FY13 state and federal legislative package. Okay. The purpose of this briefing this evening is to, again, I'm going to first go over the status of the Virginia FY12, FY13 general fund, which has somewhat changed a little bit since the initial preparation of this in August, from the August findings. Whereas such suggestions received in the 2013 state and federal legislative packages, we state the key dates for the development of the adoption of the implementation of the state and federal legislative packages, which we went over early this year. And then I'll receive input from council on the legislative package items, and then we'll discuss it in steps. First, we're going to look a little bit at the Virginia state budget. On August 15th of this year, Governor McDonnell announced that the FY12 year closed with a $448.5...
Two pages.
Sorry?
Go ahead, you're fine.
You cannot stand. Council members, excuse me for a moment.
Okay. I'm just asking a question. Why was someone allowed to be there for...
I informed the cameras not to be in that corner. You may not have been here at the time.
He wasn't, ma'am.
Fine. He just arrived.
Recovering a public meeting, ma'am.
And I appreciate that, over there, not there.
Okay. He wasn't here, ma'am.
You can continue.
Thank you. On August 15th, 2012, Governor McDonnell announced that the FY12 closed with a $448.5 million surplus. This is the third surplus in a row for Virginia. And although we have had three consecutive years of surpluses, this chart denotes a slow rebound that is taking place in the state's general fund. Between the high point in FY207 and FY13, the general fund has grown by about $145,273, $145,273, $710. And between FY13 and '14, the general fund is projected to grow by $186,760,838. The total revenues at this time are back to fiscal year 2008 levels. Although the Virginia economy continues to slowly recover, this chart, and I'm not going to go point by point for you, but you can look at it in your presentations at a later date, this shows the different revenue streams and how they have either grown or were not quite meeting projections in FY12. There were other revenues that even though we've had some that grew, some fell short, such as the real fees, contracts, and that's primarily with the recidation taxes, insurance premium tax collections fell short, and there were other revenues that finished about $15.8 million below expectations. And just in September, it was announced that the first quarter also came in below expectations, which puts the year-to-date general fund collections after three months at 1.3% ahead of the revenues for the same point as last year. All that was said to say that we're still in a pretty tenuous situation with the budget. Out of the $448.5 million surplus, the governor has outlined these particular items to receive the surplus. And this is his distribution. What you will note here is that we do not have anything assigned to eliminating the state aid to localities refund that we've been giving back to the state. If you look at the second to the last bullet there, the discretionary appropriations, $41.8 million, there may be a little wiggle room that we can pull out of there. And when I say "we," I mean the state organizations such as VML, VACO, Virginia First Cities, to try to address that particular matter in the budget. This chart is giving you a quick outlook to show you where the money is projected to go. And your largest blocks are like the $77.2 for the state fundises, $66.1 for the non-general fund, the $98.1 mandatory realizations, which is higher than $8, and the $78.3 for the revenue stabilization fund. So our fiscal outlook is still pretty volatile. Global insights have stated that they are putting the United States on a watch for the 20% to 25% recession risk due to what may be happening in the Eurozone debt crisis, the threats to oil prices from confrontations in Iran, and the sequestration that still may be taking place in January. A recent study by Stephen Fuller and Chomora Economics found that in 2013, which this has been in the papers, we could possibly lose 207,571 jobs, with 66% of that is from DOD-related jobs. However, it was in the paper today that Senator Webb made a statement that he was fairly confident that once the elections are over, Congress would come back together and address the sequestration. So it might not be as bad as we are anticipating that it could be. But it's still a pretty tenuous situation. So all of that was just to give you a little quick overview of the environment that we're going to be dealing with economically when we go back to the General Assembly in January. Next, I'll walk you through the state legislative package, and these are potential submissions that we have received. First are the City of Portsmouth charter amendments. Purpose is to correct the language in the city charter to address election filing dates and related activities, and also to change the requirements in the current charter related to incumbent council members seeking mayor or positions. I would like to point out that the first and the last bullet on this slide were suggestions that were received to be included possibly in the legislative package. The middle two are from Senate Bill 688, which is the bill that Senator Lucas has introduced back in July to address the city charter. And these are two items that she had included in her bill. And I would suspect that a resolution adopted by council to make the charter changes would need to incorporate those two items as well to keep everything in sync. The next suggestion was to amend certain provisions in the PP, and I'm sorry for the... It should be PPEA and the PPTA, which is the Public Private Education Act and the Public Private Transportation Act. The purpose would be to allow more of a role for impacted localities prior to the finalizing of any agreements or contracts. I did speak with Delegate Jones's office, and he, as well as several other legislators, are looking at perhaps putting in legislation with this particular section of the code. Some of our sister cities are also putting this in their legislative packages, but they are putting it in as policy positions. And that's something that we might want to consider going forward, and putting it as something that we could support during the General Assembly session for some changes in that area.
Now, sure. What is the likelihood that they're going to address this issue? I'm understanding that they're probably not going to do a whole lot.
Mayor Wright, the likelihood is that there is going to be some legislation put forward.
Okay.
The success of that legislation is a different story.
It's always the story.
Yes.
Well, we discussed that in the VML meeting the other day.
Exactly.
Okay.
Is there regional cooperation? Is that going to be in our other regional cities going to have that?
From what I've seen, Councilman Moody, from the other legislative packages that I've seen so far, the drafts, they're basically putting it in as a statement that needs to be addressed. And so if something should come forward, then the cities would line up behind it, but they're not particularly asking for any legislation per se.
But there's a similar to ours, and that's pretty much a statement.
Pretty much a statement, yeah.
Okay.
Next item was a constitutional amendment to restore civil rights of persons convicted of nonviolent felonies. The verbiage here was taken from a bills that former Senator Eliot Miller had been putting in for several years. Delegate Habib has also submitted legislation for this particular same situation that's going to be in the 2013 General Assembly as well.
Good.
The next one deals with amending the Code of Virginia to include regional jails. This particular section of code, as it currently reads, and that's the second bullet there, is when a county or city is without adequate jail or its jail is to be removed, we build or repair, the circuit court can adopt the jail or jails of another county or city until it can obtain adequate jail. What's missing is regional jail, it's not really stated. So what we're asking here is them to amend this section of the code so that it would be clearer to the courts that they could use the regional jail for that purpose.
Okay, that's good.
The next item is a suggestion to amend the Virginia state tax code to provide tax liability relief, creation of a special transportation zones. This would amend the tax laws in the Commonwealth to establish special transportation zones within Virginia jurisdictions that demonstrate substantial and adverse economic impact due to tolls or transportation fees imposed in lieu of general appropriations. Something similar to that, I think, came out during this last General Assembly session, not just with Senator Lucas, what she was trying to do, but also they were looking at maybe trying to do with income tax, to give people money back, and the income tax was for the tolls, but that didn't go anywhere either. So, never know till we try, right? The next one is a study request, toll impact mitigation members for disadvantaged populations. There has been so much information in the news and so much pushback for tolls statewide, not just in Hampton Roads, but then you have the I-95 corridor and Hopewell, and those areas that are pushing back on the tolls. You have the 460 corridor now with the tolls that's coming, they're getting pushed back over there. And of course, Northern Virginia's been struggling with the high tolls that's been coming down on them. So it might be timely to ask for a study to see if there's some way that it can be addressed in areas where there are certain jurisdictions that don't have alternative routes for adequate public transportation, and where there's a high degree of low and moderate income persons. So this might be avenue where the General Assembly might take it under consideration, especially being an election year that's coming up next year for them.
Oh, there's an election.
Next year. The next suggestion was to, again, dealing with tolls, to identify and implement methods to aid certain socioeconomic income groups with the forthcoming tolls. This one is specifically aimed towards Portsmouth and the citizens. Some of the suggestions there would be assistance with EZ Pass acquisition, subsidizing toll costs for low-income populations, improve transit options as alternative to paying tolls, and expect, and we have a special public outreach designed to assist low-income population with the oncoming tolls. And I forgot to mention, Jordan Bridge also has a toll on it now. This suggestion is, if you may recall, in this last General Assembly session, a port of Virginia Economic and Infrastructure Development Zone was created, which includes Portsmouth, Norfolk, and several of the localities going up the 460 corridor. This suggestion is that the General Assembly provide authority to establish a revenue-sharing agreement amongst those jurisdictions within that zone. What this legislation would do would be to allow for a revenue-sharing agreement to go forward should the localities within this zone decide that this is something they would like to pursue. So all we're asking, and with this legislation, if we go forward with it, is that we are given the ability to do such should it's decided by all the localities that they would like to do something of that nature. Finally, we have a budget appropriation request for the Children's Museum of Virginia, and this was for $250,000. And it would be used to help strengthen and support the collaborative efforts between the Portsmouth Public School and Norfolk State University for the STEM after-school and summer programs. And as you can see, it's been broken up into two requests for the next two fiscal years. We have a list of report statements here. It's not inclusive, but as much as I could get on one slide. And this is basically the items that we're saying that we fully support the legislation and budget amendments that would accomplish those following initiatives. Okay?
Okay.
All right, and we're going to quickly walk through the federal legislative piece. On the federal level, we'll be following more policy issues to include the passing of the remainder of the FY13 appropriations, continuing resolution that will happen after the elections, and we'll run through March 31st. We'll be looking at applying for competitive grants that will be issued once the six-month continuing resolution is in place. Then there's the tax reform that's going to be out there. And again, it's unlikely to be completed in post-election because it's a lame-duck session. Of course, sequestration will be following closely, and the FY14 appropriations bill. Earmarks continue to be unattainable for the foreseeable future. However, it is widely speculated on Capitol Hill that they'll come back again because this was a way that legislators were able to funnel federal funds back into their districts. So we're hopeful that eventually things will level out in Congress and they'll get back to that. So in summary, again, the state has realized that $248.5 million for FY12, there's no specific allocation for local governments included in the distribution. Our state package at this time has eight legislative requests. We didn't receive any legislative requests for citizens this year, even though we do have it out on the city webpage. Nobody's submitting anything.
No matter, not one.
Not one. We did not get one citizen submission.
Yes.
We have one appropriations request and several policy statements. And then the federal package has several policy, public policy issues for competitive grants. We don't expect going forward for the state, no state funding for non-state agencies to continue. A continuation of less state aid to localities, of course, unfortunately, and less federal aid to state and locality. So we're still in that period of time. Your key dates and your next steps, next week, on the 29th, you have your meeting with your delegation members to go over the legislative packages. And then your November dates, point out House Appropriations Retreat and the Senate Finance Committee Retreats in November. In December, the governor will submit his budget to the joint money committees, and we'll get a further update of what the economy looks like in the state of Virginia. First day of session is the 9th of January, Congress begins in January. And if Congress doesn't do anything about sequestration, it triggers a court in January. Questions, answers, comments.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Good job.
Any questions? Good job.
All right, thank you, Ms. Neal.
Thanks.
The second item that you had on the agenda is the tax exemption legislation. I think there's probably been some conversation on that with the Law Department in terms of subject provisions that you all might consider. While we did list that here for general council discussion, you know, some questions that you might have or guidance in terms of, you know, whether or not you'd want to see other aspects of tax exemptions. I think one of the subject matters that had come up before was the group CCDI. Any additional discussion on that?
Any discussion on it?
Well, I think that discussion centered around that we treat our CCDI a little differently than some of our sister cities or one of our sister cities. So I guess the question is, do we want to give them tax exempt status since they're doing things to add to our tax rolls? Do we want to, and this is going forward, not retroactively, do we want to propose a change and bring us in line with one of our other sister cities?
And I thought we had a consensus that that's what we wanted to do. We're working towards doing that. And the attorney was tasked to bring back what we need to do to do that. I know he sent us some data, some information, and I don't know, I don't think you sent us anything. I thought that was going to come from you two, but I think we got...
Well, I sent council an explanation of the complicated process you would have to go through if you want to do this. If council does wish to go forward on this, I will prepare for you two ordinances outlined in my letter. One would be an ordinance to repeal the blanket prohibition on new tax exemptions that we've had in the city code for many years. And the second would be to set forth the procedure by which someone could apply for a tax exemption once the prohibition on new tax exemptions is repealed. If you want me to draft those for you, I will be glad to do that. If you want me to hold off until you have had a chance to think about it some more and discuss it among yourselves, I'll do it whichever way you would like.
I think one of the concerns that I had on that is what is the impact on other organizations, and how do we manage that? And what is the financial cost or burden that we're going to have if we do institute that?
Would you want that information before you have an ordinance?
Oh, absolutely.
I think diligence requires that.
Yeah. And I thought that was the next step in the process, actually.
Now, are we talking about impact of CCDI, or are you talking about impacts overall?
In general.
General.
If you're going to make a policy change, it's going to affect...
The information you sent us, there were two types. There was designated, and what was the other?
Well, there's granting exemptions by designation of a classification. But the situation is, right now, the city code duly enacted by city council says no new tax exemptions. If you repeal that prohibition, then you open up the door to everyone, every nonprofit to apply for a tax exemption. And so the question is, do you want to open up that door?
But by designation gives us more leeway to decide to select CCDI and nobody else right now, and as they come in one by one, or to make a call as they come in?
Again, if you repeal the prohibition, then you open the door wide to an presently unknown number of nonprofit associations to come in and apply.
I got that part.
Right now, you don't have any procedure by which they can apply. So you would need to enact a procedure, and then, once they start coming in to apply, then you can decide on an individual basis. If you want to open that door, you can start deciding on an individual basis as the applications come in whether or not to grant them.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. That it's not a blanket, you apply and you get it. We would have the, we as a council would decide, but if it was by designation, you said, who gets it and who doesn't?
Yes, that's correct. But as I understand it, if I understood what council just said correctly, you want to know the potential financial implications before you open that door.
Absolutely. I'm just asking the process now, if there's...
The process would be just what you said. If you open the door, which is shut by now, right now, and has been shut for many years, if you open the door, then there will beyond question be a stream of nonprofit associations coming to you, asking to be made, for their real estate to be made tax exempt, and you would have to act on those one at a time as they come to you. Right now, we don't know how many organizations there would be, nor what the potential loss of tax revenue would be.
And the problem I make about CCDI is, any tax exemption that we were to give them on the properties, and we're only talking about the property, will only be to the extent of the time period it takes for the property to be resold and put back on the tax roll. So if they're working on a property for six months, it's six months. If they're working on it for a year, it's a year. So it's not like they start on a property and that property is tax exempt forever. So unlike what most other organizations would probably be asking for. So, but I think we move forward, bring back the financial information, and we move forward with trying to make...
So if we've got, Mr. Oaksman, three Chodos, are you saying that we want to make one of those Chodos tax exempt, Mr. Cherry, and not the other ones? Or are you saying all of the Chodos become tax exempt?
The other Chodos haven't asked to be tax exempt. We review them when and if they ask. CCDI is asking. The other ones, if they ask, then we look at them too. If they don't ask, then...
Isn't that a possible form of discrimination? Or...
How discriminating they haven't asked?
Would you have one Chodo paying taxes and another one not?
I don't have a problem with exempting Chodo. I'm just saying they haven't asked. If you want to make a blanket at all Chodos be tax exempt, I don't have a problem with that.
You know what?
But we have to find out. Go ahead, Mr. Moody.
You know, what we're talking about here, we're not talking about people trying to get something for nothing. We're talking about people that are rehabbing homes, that have a blighting influence on a number of communities, and we're talking about homes that weren't on the tax rolls anyway, more than likely. So we're talking about raising the property value of a structure to get it back on the city's tax rolls. So we're talking about people who are bringing something to the table by charging them tax. I feel like we're penalizing them for helping us. So that's where I'm coming from on this. And I think whatever parameters we establish for our Chodo, you know, if we got one, in this case, I guess we got maybe three, I think the parameters need to apply for them as well.
That's my point. We've got to be fair to everybody.
And we may not have three Chodos in the future. So...
Doesn't matter. If you get three, or one, or four, you've got to be fair to everybody.
That's fine. No problem with that. But we may not have three, because we have three now, and I mean, the next budget, we're going to have three. We have three at the moment.
Okay. Well, I thought what council wanted, and let me play this back to you, make sure I have it correct, before you want any ordinance drafted, you want a report on what the potential revenue impact would be.
Absolutely.
Drafting the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to work to get that prepared for council as soon as we can.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next thing we're going to bring up is a small PowerPoint on street sweeping. And wanting to give you update, I'd like to recognize Ms. Judy Duffy come to the table. Of course, we had a history in terms of providing street sweeping services in the city, and probably some award-winning history at times, probably over the last 10 years, not as award-winning. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we actually had a citizen that had come up as a non-agenda speaker and actually had a letter from city manager George Hanbury at that time that talked about, you know, when that particular resident's street would be swept. So we've actually made some modifications. Oddly enough, we actually went about over the last year and actually studied some other successful programs. One of those programs that we won't touch on tonight, but I'll just mention, is the city of Norfolk. What was odd is when we actually went to study the city of Norfolk's... What was odd is when we actually went to study the city of Norfolk's program, we found out that the elementary route that they had for their success had come from Portsmouth program seven years before. So it kind of goes around and comes back around. So I'd like to recognize Ms. Duffy to lead this particular section to talk to us about some of the street sweeping improvements we're considering making at this point. Okay, Ms. Duffy?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As Mr. Chandler said, we're here tonight to kind of give you an update on the sweeper operations and talk about some of the things we're doing with the pilot program to enhance our service effectiveness. We established what our goals were for the program, and this is not anything new. Our first goal was to make sure we meet the requirements of our stormwater permit. As you all know, our permit requires that we minimize pollutants that enter our waterways to our maximum extent practical. This is a federal regulation that we have in our permit. Street sweeping is currently a program, a best management practice that's in our current permit. And it does help us minimize the pollutants by getting the leaves and the debris off the street before it gets into the pipes. By doing that, it helps us deter flooding because it keeps the pipes from being clogged. And also, excuse my first. Our permit right now is under review by EPA and the state. So this is something that we've got to keep an eye on. We expect some stricter regulations to meet our permit as it, as the new one comes out. Now, we feel that the second program goal, to provide an aesthetically pleasing appearance to our curbs neighborhood by doing the first and meeting our permit requirements, that's going to happen. The third program goal, to provide a service that's reliable, efficient, effective, and predictable. We feel like by doing this, this will be an asset both to our citizens and to our program. Because the more that we can let the neighborhoods know that we're going to be scheduling their neighborhood and then move their cars, certainly the less costly, the easier it will be to get in there and sweep the streets. Just a little bit about our current operations that we have right now.
You'll see I copied all council members.
The street sweeping program has been in the waste management part of Public Works, probably, General Services since the late 80s. We currently fund that program by a mixture of stormwater monies and the VDOT highway money. We have four very experienced street sweeper operators in there. And we have six sweepers which provide some backup when sweepers are down. And three of those sweepers are new, purchased within the last two years. So we have, have good basis for the program. Currently, the operators work the same schedule as the waste management operators. They work a four, 10-hour day. If you look at the map over here, we divide the city into three sectors. And the idea is just to get into each of these sectors four times a year. So we have all the curved neighborhoods identified in the map. Green is Sector 1, and that's January. You go to the red, it's February. Yellow becomes March and circle down through the years. So you have January, February, March, April, May, and June. We sweep the downtown business area twice a week. It's usually Monday and Friday. And we try to do all our arterial sweeping in the early morning hours. Now, the purpose of that is twofold. One, the sweepers are noisy. We don't want them in our neighborhoods too early, waking up our citizens. So we try to stick to the main highways and also try to get there before all the traffic slows them down from working. These are what we consider our four points of keys to success for making this program as the best that it can be. And the first one sounds real simple, but it's not as simple as, as you say, keep the sweepers on the streets as much as possible. There are things, factors that influence the sweeper's operation that are somewhat out of your control. If it's too cold, too wet, you can't operate the sweepers out there. If the traffic gets too great, you can't operate the sweepers. Also, sweepers are a very high maintenance piece of equipment. So we're constantly tweaking things with the vehicle service center to make sure that we're doing maintenance and off-hours, doing the things that we need to do to keep the sweepers on the street as much as possible. The second key to success is going to be to make sure that we're meeting all our permit requirements. Now, this is an ongoing process because, as I said, these permit requirements are changing as we speak. But we're expecting there to be some requirements that come through where you have to test the debris that you pick up in your sweeper, make sure that you're meeting your pollutant loads for the state. Also, where you dispose of the waste and how you dispose of the waste. It sounds simple to pick up leaves and you're taking them from one place to the next, but it's not as simple as that. You have to do certain watering procedures to make sure you can dispose of it. Okay. And the third thing about looking at our sweeping schedule, because we have certain neighborhoods, as you all know, that have heavy tree canopies. And the more trees you have down the street, the more leaves you're going to have in the neighborhood. So certain neighborhoods take a little more time, a little more effort to make sure you get those leaves off the street. And we want to try to tweak that to make sure we're doing the best we can do to keep that stuff from getting into the storm drainage system. Public information we feel is a key to the success of this program. As we said, if you have cars on your street that aren't moved, it makes it much harder to sweep. The best thing is to do is to get to a point where we're predictable, we're reliable. You know we're coming into your neighborhood next week. You know that you, if you move your car, we'll be able to get down your street. So the more public information we use for that, the better we'll be. So we're already doing a lot of this. We call it, it's a pilot program, and we're already starting on this. And some of the things we've done is the street sweeper program has been moved from waste management to the stormwater operations. As we said, this is an integral part of our permit. It's an integral stormwater maintenance activity. So it's a priority for stormwater to get this off the street. The more, the better, more effective this program is, the better we're going to be able to meet our permit requirements. The cleaner the streets are going to be, and the less effort it's going to have to be to clean the pipes out once it gets into the pipe system. So this is an important component of the pilot. We're going to continue to monitor the permit. We have, we are part of the regional stormwater process right now that works through the PDC. All the regions, all the cities around here work together on their permits, on their programs to make it a regional effort to try to meet these goals. We're already in the process of collecting data, looking at the hours of operations, how we're looking at the neighborhoods, the best use of the equipment, how we dispose, and we're going to be continuing to collect that data to make sure we get the best program. What we'd like to do is work on this and come back to you all in the April, May timeframe and tell you if there's any recommendations that we have to further improve the program. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions.
Judy, make sure you get a copy of this to Sergeant Major. And get Sergeant Major's input.
Okay.
Yeah. So when would you like to kick this off? After you bring it back to us in the April, May timeframe or the pilot you're running?
We're moving ahead. We've moved the operations. We think this is going to give a greater priority. I think, I think we're already moving ahead.
As far as some input, we need to make sure that we focus with the civic leagues to help us with that public information because, again, we, we schedule it, we come out, people don't move their cars, and then we get calls. Nobody's ever seen those four street sweepers that we have, and it's good to know we've got two in backup. So it's important to make sure we engage the civic leagues and others so they can help get the word out so we can make sure that we, you know.
Right.
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody?
To that point, Mayor, I would like to suggest, because civic league's getting the word out, the people leave and they forget. Could we possibly use reverse 911 to alert people, hey, street sweeper's coming down your street tomorrow. Make sure your car, vehicle's off the curb. Is that a possibility?
We could look into any possibility. As, as Mr. Chandler said, we are looking at other cities' programs and the way they're doing it. Some cities are using the, like the message boards that you see out for traffic to put at the entrance to neighborhoods. Some are, you know, using just the city's website. So all those are things that we're looking at and trying to.
I think the more, the better. We'll ensure that the street gets swept.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Very good, Mayor. Okay. Mr. Chandler?
We're going to return, but we've got so much in closed session. I guess I might suggest to the mayor.
Well done.
I've never done one other, in terms of hot topics. Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing that I wanted to mention, as we have talked just recently. Of course, there's been a number of media inquiries, even council inquiries, relative to the use and the works of the Family Medical Leave Act. And a lot of stories, of course, surrounding Fire Chief Don Horton. I would like to take a minute or two, if I could, in terms of talking with council this evening, as we normally do in this setting. You know, as an opportunity to inform council, and I know we talked a little bit just yesterday, in addition to the public. This setting, in a sense, and what I'd like to try to work through, is of course, putting us in position, if you will, not to violate certain aspects of the Family Medical Leave Act in terms of disclosing certain information. And what I'll mention, a couple of things, just to kind of start off. Of course, normally, the subject matters, we did last night, talk about certain aspects of it. You're normally talking about that in closed session because of certain provisions of the federal law and regulation. In terms of the provisions, and again, I can go a little bit with a whole lot of history. It is a provision where employers under certain sizes have the ability to grant certain leave that actually protects the individual's job for certain qualifying events. In this instance, and FIML is something that we exercise in our organization when it comes up, and it's not foreign to us. It's a process that we go through, you know, a number of times a year. However, in this instance, the activation, and in this case, you know, for the person in question, the position in question of Fire Chief, had an event, and me being the immediate supervisor in terms of working this process, that individual approached me to give me some aspects of the issue, not the full details of what could be a qualifying event. Process-wise, as a supervisor, I actually sent him to Human Resources. That is the next step of our process in our organization where the individual employee would actually go to Human Resources to activate or begin the process. There is certain paperwork that that individual will complete with Human Resources, and then it actually goes to a third-party determinant to actually have the medical review and certain things that would go on in that process to determine whether or not it is a qualifying event. In this instance, for, for that position of Fire Chief, Human Resources was approached. The appropriate paperwork was completed. It was submitted, and it did come back as a qualified event. And again, not going into a whole lot of detail about that. One of the other provisions of the act is if the individual, and if the employer policy, which our policy does, allow the individual to take up to 12 weeks for their qualifying event, and normally the event kind of specifies the timeframe within that 12 weeks. I think in this instance, we're probably talking about maybe 11 or so. That with that qualifying event, that individual, if they have certain leave on the books, like accrued sick leave, vacation, and if they didn't have any of those, they'd be on a leave without pay status for whatever that prescribed time would be, up to, say, 12 weeks. And again, in this instance, this was probably, I think, 11-week situation. That individual, as they had processed out, had advised me, you know, that they were going to go ahead and return to their home locality to deal with the issues that they had to work through. There wasn't any major indication that they would probably return at that time. The other piece that I will mention is during that time, within the fire department, I did select what was then a deputy chief that had come back out of retirement and had requested that that individual come back out of retirement and take a contract. Okay, so it wasn't an actual vacancy within the complement that is approved by city council. We have executed contract provisions before in the organization, probably multiple administrations even before mine. But that individual came back in the contract position. What had happened is that individual was the first of two who had actually retired from the organization, maybe about nine, 10 months ago, and seemed to be probably the best suited individual to come back in in an interim period of time. As mentioned before, my forecasted period of time was probably going to be about four months. After four months of time, we would go ahead and consider, you know, what the next steps might be, you know, whether or not we would recruit for a new chief or anything of that nature, whether we not, we would continue the current interim status of Chief Barfield, anything of that nature. Probably, and I mentioned one other thing too, the other deputy chief at that time actually did retire, a little bit younger than I am, but did retire to take another job out of state, you know, as a Fire Chief. So it left the department at a point where we didn't have two deputies. I think that was actually covered in the news media as well, as, you know, some vacancies there. So moving on, probably about a week before the 11-week term was up for the Fire Chief, he did make contact with me and did express interest in possibly returning to the organization. In conversation with him about that possibility, again, back to the regulations. The regulations normally will speak to the fact that the individual does have the right to return back to the job that they held. Either the job that they held or a similar capacity. I'm not quoting the regulations, but somewhere in that ballpark. With that, with Chief Barfield serving in the interim capacity, two things that I had noticed. We noticed a great deal of camaraderie with his return. A huge boost in morale, and I think I kind of had likened that at the time that we had Chief Corvello come back in the police department to serve in an interim capacity. Also, in working with the Fire Chief and looking to come back. Family life issues were very different than when he was in service before and had expressed, he had expressed interest in the possibility of maybe coming back to the current capacity with maybe some limitations, or if there was another capacity that was available and equivalent, or that he could consider. In that regard, we did have one of the deputy chiefs vacancies open. He has had great deal of skill in performing in the capacity of the emergency coordinator, which is a capacity that's normally tied and designated by council to the Fire Chief's position. This is also the same deputy vacancy that when Beck Barfield was with the department. He was the emergency services person, or the job description reflects the fact that emergency management or emergency services is part of that job description. So again, in looking at that, that is the vacancy we use, because I think an important question that has come up. Counsel does appropriate the number of positions for the organization as a whole. And if I used a hypothetical small number of 10, if counsel appropriates 10 positions, we would have to work within the 10 positions. We can't add an 11. So what we did in this instance is we used the deputy chief, which was an existing authorized vacancy within the department. In addition to that, it's been mentioned, and we've done it before, in terms of using a working title. So currently, the classification, the classing plan is deputy chief. The working title that we used was Deputy Director of Emergency Management. What that focused on is the coordinator role that is part of the Fire Chief's position is designated. It's normally a reactive role, meaning when we go into an emergency event, we use declare a local declaration of emergency. We assemble resources to manage to that event. What I had projected and considered within that job description for the Deputy Director of Emergency Management was to be and is to be a more proactive role. A large part of the community outreach that takes place, a number of programs that are working through the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission as well. This is a sea level. the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission as well, this sea level rising, a couple of other things as well. So, in that, I did make an appointment to actually have Chief Horton come back to that position in that deputy chief's capacity. There was never a time that we had two Fire Chiefs at one time. Beck Barfield, as the interim person, was always the interim. When the Fire Chief came back, of course, he returned to that deputy chief's vacancy with the working title that I've mentioned to you. And as we moved forward, again, looking at just kind of the breakdown of the duties and responsibilities, the demand for the job in terms of what was happening, I did make an election to consider Beck Barfield for the immediate future in terms of the full-time capacity. So, he actually came off of the contract status at that point. We stopped normally the retirement process, so there is no retirement check that is going with that, and then he comes back and has come back on the salary scale, if you will, full-time.
Thank you, Reverend. Any questions or comments about that?
Yeah, I've got a question. The, I guess, the family medical leave part is, we've been pretty well-educated on that. Of course, some of us here deal with it in our own businesses and have dealt with it for a number of years. I don't think that's the, that's the part that's stumping everybody. I think the part is, the chief resigned. He communicated resignation that went to the Director of Human Resources, and it was said last night that you were made aware of that, and you cannot be on family medical leave once you resign a position. Once you resign, the employee, employer relationship is over. End of story. So, that's, that's where everybody is still struggling with, what, what happened there. And the city attorney shared with us last night that the transaction form, I guess, when an employee's status changes, the PTR form, I believe, was referred to, that the city attorney still doesn't have a copy of that, and Director of Human Resources says that she didn't get a copy of that. So, it, this has all the appearance that it was, wasn't handled according to standard operating procedures. So, that's why we're here, and that's why a lot of people are still puzzled over the handling of this.
I'll, I'll take a shot at that. I think we've discussed this before, and I think the challenge becomes whether or not you agree with the process. But let's go back to the resignation piece first. If we're remembering, I think, the qualifying event that was recorded in terms of filing for FEMLA was a day before that email. I would say it would come to question if the email was a day before the qualifying event, because if the email was a day before the qualifying event, we've got certain provisions of the charter that would say you could not use sick leave. But in this instance, the email was the day after, so it was within the window. That's one piece.
Where's the record of the qualifying event? Is that the PTR form?
No, sir. No, that, that is the qualifying form that Ms. Bembry talked about recently. There's certain paperwork that you fill out relative to FEMLA. Now, touch upon the PTR. Once there is the qualifying event, in this instance, the individuals, I said, you have some entitlement. If you do have the accrued sick leave, you can use that. So, the accrued sick leave was actually used. For the 11-week period of time, and that person's on the payroll, they're on the payroll, being paid out the sick leave that they've accrued. When they get to this point, and I'll kind of use the example that we had, if there wasn't a situation where this individual would have come back at the end of the 11-week period of time, the PTR form would have been used to take that person off the payroll. So, that's the time that that would have been executed. And in this instance, the individual or the PTR wasn't done to take the person off the payroll because they did return to the lower-level capacity or vacancy.
But there, again, the chief communicated resignation. Once you resign, you're done. End of story. So...
And I understand what you're saying, sir, and I'm not here to debate your, your position, you know, as it's been reported in...
I mean, we've all seen the copy of the resignation, and it came from the chief. Your name was on it. It was sent to Ms. Bembry, and it was a resignation. I mean, was his resignation denied for some reason? Or what? That's still the unanswered question here.
Well, I think the first question, we just worked to answer, and now we have a second question. And like I said, we may not all agree process-wise how that works, but I think one of the local news media entities that actually reported that they took this process to the Department of Labor, and the report back was...
The resignation?
The process in terms of how this individual...
Tell them about the resignation, because if the resignation was there, nothing else matters.
Okay. We're not, we're not going to debate that, Mr. Moody. Okay. Any other questions or comments on what the manager had just explained? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Very good. Okay. Next item.
Is that it?
Is that it? Okay.
Council members, are there any city council liaison reports?
Not at this time.
You have a motion for a closed meeting.
Ms. Rand.
I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37118, first to discuss appointments by city council and the performance of individual city employees. The subject matter of the meeting is to discuss the qualifications of candidates for appointments to boards and commissions, and also personnel matters. The purpose of the meeting is to permit confidential discussion of candidates plus personnel matters.
Okay.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Heretic?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
No.
And I'm saying no because what we're going to discuss has certainly been out in the public domain, and in fact, before I left my office, I was even reading some information referenced that. So, I think this should be open book.
Okay. We duly noted that. Next.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mr. Whitehurst?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
We are in closed session. Thank you.